Somebody doesn't have their microphone on. Welcome to this week's meeting of the Rockland Board of Selectmen coming to you live on WRPS from the H. Bernard Monahan Memorial Room at Rockland Town Hall. On the agenda this week, we've got loan subordination, marijuana community host agreements, and the 9/11 remembrance ceremony. Now, here's the Chairman of the Board of Selectmen, Mr. Larry Ryan.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Selectmen's meeting for Tuesday, September 4th, 2018. Could we all stand, please? And Mike, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I have a pledge of allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands: One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. And a brief moment of silence for Senator John McCain, if he would. Thank you very much. Please be advised that this open meeting is being broadcast live and recorded by WRPS for playback on Comcast Channel 14 and Verizon Channel 31. It will also be available for online video on-demand viewing at wrpsrockland.com within 24 hours of its conclusion, as are other recently-recorded meetings and community events. Please go to wrpsrockland.com for further information. Community announcements. First item is the Freedom Walk, bicentennial track, Reed Street, September 11th. Anybody here for that?
No one could come this evening, but the Boy Scouts wanted the town to know that they're hosting a Freedom Walk on Tuesday, September 11th, and everyone is welcome. There's no fees and no fundraising at the event. It's simply a walk to reflect on 9/11.
Do they have a...are they just doing it at bicentennial?
Bicentennial track on Reed Street, anytime between 5:00 and 7:00 p.m.
Very good. Next is minutes, and the first one is the open session minutes of July 10th, 2018.
I'll make a motion to...hold on a second. I'm confused really quick. Hold on, if you can. I make a motion to table those meeting minutes?
Isn't that the executive session minutes you're thinking of?
Yeah, but I actually found a question over the open session meeting also, so I just want to...if I can make a motion to table those as well, I just want to make sure that...
They're accurate.
Yes.
You've got a motion to table the open session minutes of July 10th and the open and the executive session minutes of July 10th. Should we do them individually?
Well, I go to abstain. I wasn't at that meeting.
Yes.
Okay.
So I'll make a motion to table the open session meeting minutes of July 10th, 2018.
And I'll second it, because I was the only one there. All in favor? Put one abstention. Now, July 10th, executive session?
I'll make a motion to table the executive session minutes of July 10th, 2018.
I abstain.
I'll second. All in favor? That's a vote. What about the open minutes, session minutes of August 14th, 2018?
I'll make a motion to approve. Second.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor? And the executive session minutes of August 14th, 2018, minutes not to be released till our matters are settled.
And I'll make a motion to approve. Second.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor? That's a vote. Agenda item number three: Board of Selectmen Liaisons. Normally, we would...the chairman would take care of this item, but being as we're doing things differently these days, we want to do it out in front of everybody so everybody has an idea of what's going on and who's the liaisons and it's public and etc. Just for...what's the word they use these days?
Transparency.
Transparency, yeah, there you go. That's the key word for these days. Now, Mr. Allen, just to inquire as to whether we wanted to do this tonight, or do we want to wait until we have five members in the room?
No, I think, you know, we've had enough of the departments in town looking for some kind of support or guidance. You know, I talked to a couple of the departments during my office hours that came forward wondering who it is that they would reach out to from the board. Now, I think certainly, you know, one of the things that we've talked about, you know, I don't like the practice of, you know, the chairman signing liaisons. I think going forward, we should probably do it in this manner where we have a discussion. When I was on the Finance Committee, it was simply you mention the board, you mention the committee, and you go around the room, and if somebody's interested, you give them a chance. And I think that's something that, you know, it's really something for us to be a resource for the departments and the committees, but it's also to give us...to give us some insight so that we can understand and speak intelligently about what's going on in those departments. So with that said, I mean, I know we had a couple of members that were here that aren't anymore, that had some important committees that they were the liaisons to. I did also notice that police and fire weren't on here either, that they were not assigned back when these came out. So I think they're two pretty important departments that we might want to have an idea of what they're doing, what's going on.
Yep.
I don't think I saw...I think I saw highway either.
No.
So that's another one. Sure, we could take it? I mean, we can go right down the list. Community Preservation Committee?
Well, can I just say, I'll flag a few dots. I agree completely with everything you just mentioned. Our two things...two questions I have just as we do this, Mr. Loughlin. One thing that, like, I mean, like, in this, we'll interfere a little bit with what we're trying to do in terms of just really dividing up the liaison assignments out of the two former board members I had, but while we're doing this, one thing that I would also propose cleaning up would be the member of this board who has the Youth Commission, also have the Community Center. That's one thing.
Yeah, no, I'm totally with that.
And just to have that all together.
There was some confusion last time as well.
Yes. But the last question that I have, again, this is kind of like an open question because we're just a committee of three right now, and then just over two months, we're gonna thankfully be a committee of five again. The School Building Committee, you know, that is like a long-term membership position, especially in terms of the building project we have hopefully happening. Like, and I'm wondering, like, on that position especially, whether it makes sense to hold off, like, on appointing this board member until we have a full board, just so we can really make sure that the person who eventually is on there, like, is reflective of the will of the entire board, if that makes sense.
Sure. No, Mike, makes complete sense. I think, like you said, it is...that's a position that's going to be going on for some years.
Yeah.
You know, so, you know, it should be somebody that is all in. So, yeah, I agree with that, holding off on that. But I also think maybe...maybe a couple of other committees that we actually have liaisons to, maybe we shouldn't. You know, I think...I think we should really be looking at, you know, especially since we're heading into budget season, we should really be looking at departments and committees that have, you know, a role in the budget. You know, there's certain committees that, you know, I mean, if you take conservation, you take zoning, and you take planning, they're not really, you know, budget impact committees. I think they're committees that, you know, if they need to, you know, ask a question at Town Hall, I think their questions, their point person should be the town administrator, not necessarily a member of the Board of Selectmen. They can always come to us. I mean, obviously, you know, our doors are always open, we have office hours. Anybody's got a question, they can come to us. But I think that process should probably go through the town administrator.
And actually, to that issue, and we can probably talk about this for three hours because, you know, like, there's so many liaisons here, like, and I think we've all over the past few months have had many conversations about this. Originally, like, I thought a similar thing, but like, I just know also the challenges that sometimes residents in potential or even like existing businesses have with some committees, like, I mean, and in terms of just by nature of what those committees do, being the zoning board, the planning board, the concom. Like, it might actually make sense for us to continue to have a liaison, like, just being...the fact that, you know, like, our two of those committees actually answer to this board, like, and whoever the town administrator is, if we expect the town administrator to intervene on our behalf, potentially that could make things dicey for whoever the town administrator is, because technically with the zoning board and the Conservation Commission in particular, those committees answer to us. Like, I mean, in terms of they'll answer to us, I mean, we want them to make their own independent...
We appoint them.
Exactly. So, like, I'm wondering just for the, at least foreseeable future, like, until we have a new board, and we can have like a more robust conversation about the nature of what liaisons really do in their role, like, I think it might be helpful to, and, you know, keep those liaisons or, like, or someone liaison to those boards, and I don't think they have to attend every meeting. You know, that would be probably impractical and unrealistic, but just in case...
Well, I think that's the other thing, too, right? I think somewhere out there about lost that we're not members of these committees.
Exactly.
And nor should we necessarily be at the meetings.
Agreed.
You know, I was Finance Committee last year, and I know for a fact that I didn't go to one of their meetings. They came to me with questions. You know, they'd reach out to me, they had my phone, they'd send me emails if they had a question. Or if we had something that we were working on the budget, I'd give them a heads-up just so they knew what it was that we were looking at, you know, what the plan was. But, you know, I think we need to get to a position where we let these boards and committees operate independently and they can report.
Oh, and I agree, yeah.
Absolutely, they can report. And if we want to do something with a liaison, I'd suggest that we group them together so that, you know, because they're so, you know, conservation, planning, and zoning, you know, I think that it should be a single liaison for the three. It's a lot, but I think it's...
It's a real...that's the only thing.
But to that point, I mean, it's just answering questions, you know.
I think that one of the issues becomes, if you're...I've been a park department liaison. I've never been to a park department meeting. However, I talk to the park commissioners and tell them, you know, basically, if you guys have anything you need from us, I'm the guy you come and see.
Yep.
And that goes with most of these other committees, too. The ones that we appoint, then we have to make sure that they toe the mark as far as what their supposed requirements are according to town charter, etc., etc. But other than that, anything that's elected by somebody else, we really don't have any authority over, but we can certainly be their representative to the board if they come up with a question. You know, I'm the guy, if I'm going to do the airbase thing, then the people would come to me first and say, hey, look, you know, or if they come to you first, then I know I'm not doing my job. So, you know, it's our dr...it isn't our job to tell them what to do. It's our job to tell them that we're available if they need us.
Yes.
And if everything's going smoothly, they don't need us, and that's great. And they can run the place, and everybody's happy. But if there's a problem that they can't solve, then they'll come to us and do it. So I don't know what you want to do for the rest of the night in dividing these up, but...
Well, I'd say the best bet, we just maybe go through them.
Yeah. Yeah, do it.
If somebody's got something they want to do, we just call it out.
You ought to read it.
Okay. Community Preservation Committee?
If you want, I'll do that one.
Internet Committee?
I'll take care of that.
School Committee? I'll do that.
Mike?
If anybody's okay.
Yeah.
The loudest, so that...
Yeah, I'll take care of that one. Civil Commission?
I'll do that one, if you want, Larry.
Sure, that works for me.
Stormwater Committee?
I can take care of that. I think that the sewer people have that pretty much under control.
Water Commission? I'll take it. All right, Zoning Board of Appeals?
I'll take the zoning board.
Cable Advisory?
I'll do that one.
Conservation? I'll take it. Energy Committee?
That committee doesn't exist.
Yeah, I didn't think it did anymore. School Building Committee, we're going to pass over. The SRA Board?
I'll do that.
Yeah. Police Department?
I'll do that one, if that's okay.
Fire Department? I'll take that one.
Perfect.
And then Highway Department? I mean, you mentioned not having liaisons for departments where there's elected officials, but I think the highway might be something with the size of their budget.
No, I think we have liaisons for them. I just think that we tell them that, you know, our job isn't to tell them what to do or make policy or dictate anything to them. Our job is that if they have a problem that they can't handle, they can come to us and we can...and I'd be the person, they first talk about it, and I bring it back to the board, and then we can decide where we're going to go with whatever problem we got.
So I talked to Dave during my office hours. I'd be willing to take that as liaison for highway.
Sure.
Fine.
Works for me.
And then, Mike, I have Community Center.
Yep.
Why don't I throw that into the Youth Commission, and you keep it?
Sure, so I'll do both.
Yeah, well, Community Center, you suggested, was Youth Commission as well.
Yeah, no, if that makes sense.
So we can just eliminate Community Center altogether and call it Youth Commission?
No, that's perfect, Mike.
Okay. All right.
Perfecto.
Sounds good. And that's not anything we need to vote on. That's just us.
Are we good?
Yeah, I'm good. You good?
Yeah, no, it's perfect.
Okay.
Thank you.
Excellent. All right, let's go to the number four here. Subordinate Loans, Community Development. Ms. Birmingham, I mean...
Mr. Chairman, Wayne Darrah could not be here with us tonight, but his office has a request for a loan subordination for a resident who participated in the housing rehab program. Wayne's office has reviewed the request and feels it's safe for the town to subordinate the loan, so he's asking for the board to vote to permit this homeowner to change his loan that he originally received through the housing rehab program. He has sufficient equity to protect the town's interest in the loan.
Do you have any discussion?
Make a motion to approve?
Yeah, I'll second that motion.
Okay, you got a motion and a second. All the paperwork seems to be in order. All in favor? That's a vote.
Great.
All right. Let's see, Marijuana Community Host Agreements. We have two tonight. One is Two Buds LLC and Fidelity Wellness. Basically, the state allows us to take 3% of the sales tax off the top and 3% of whatever comes in off the top also with certain minimums and maximums. The big thing is, quite frankly, comes at the end of these agreements where the town, where the companies have offered to give upwards of $25,000, $20,000 to $25,000 for volunteer entities like the Veterans, like Rockland Cares, and those type of things. So basically, it's a good deal for the town of Rockland. I think that the marijuana people are going to be good neighbors. I think they're going to be solid citizens for Rockland, and if everything goes well, it bodes well for Rockland financially in the next five years, because that's going to be the critical time in the transition between these two products. So anybody who wants a copy of these things can come and get one at the Town Hall if they want to read what we do and what it's all about. But basically, I have two agreements, and one is with...let's see, Two Buds LLC. Does anybody have any discussion on them?
Is there anybody here?
Does anybody here from LLC? Come on up. Come on right up here and tell everyone who you are and what your plans are.
Right, where you're located.
Right, where you're going to be located?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Jim Borgazani. I'm working with Two Buds. And before I start, I just want to echo what you just said about being a good citizen. We're very grateful for this step to establish first-class facility in Rockland, and we have every intention of being a good longtime citizen, good corporate citizen, good civic citizen, and helping, you know, a lot of worthy charities, frankly. We plan to apply for three licenses, four licenses, with the Cannabis Control Commission. It'll be a manufacturing facility, a cultivation facility, a retail facility, and a third-party transport facility. So four licenses at 51 Airport Drive Road, 53 Airport Drive Road. And I do want to say that Rockland has a lot to be proud of in the way that the town officials have moved forward with this. I work in a lot of towns across the state, and we haven't had the positive and the intelligent approach that Rockland is showing in a lot of the other towns. So you have a lot to be proud of, and your constituents have a lot to be proud of in the way you've gone about this, from everything, from dealing with all of the local officials to dealing with the property on it. It's been a very positive experience for Two Buds, and we're very grateful to have this next step taking place. As the Cannabis Control Commission requires top-level security, anybody that has seen any of these facilities knows that it looks nothing like a liquor store or pharmacy. The security is far greater than any of those. The...there'll be perimeter cameras, there'll be an entranceway where you have to show your ID before you even get into the retail area, and then you have to show your ID again before the sales. There's no product displays in the windows. Anybody going by would not see anything in the windows by law. And there's...when you go into one of these places, there's no product on a counter or on a shelf, like in a package store. You can't see...you can't touch a product until you purchase it, basically. It's all...it's more like a jewelry store. It's all behind a case, underneath glass, very different model than a package store or pharmacy. And I think that Massachusetts is probably going to lead the way in security and preventing underage sales. So we're very excited to meet all of the requirements that the state will put before us and any that the town will also.
Thank you.
Great.
Any other questions? I'd be glad to answer.
I don't have any.
Just a pleasure of the board regarding the community host agreement for Two Buds LLC.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor? That's a vote. And now we want to hear from Fidelity Wellness.
Good evening, Board.
Good evening, Marcy. My name's Mario Chicorello. I was here about a year ago for a medical letter of support. Retained that. Now, we're looking for the host agreement, 256 Waymouth Street. The company is Fidelity Wellness. And like we said, we'd like to go for adult use. The host agreement, we're pretty much...we're good with everything. There is one thing, on the way over, we were going through the host agreement, we just had one question. Number 14, term and termination. So the town may terminate this agreement at any time. Should it read more like the town should not terminate the agreement without reasonable cause or something? Maybe just to protect us a little bit, because we're talking, this is a multimillion-dollar investment. Just our cultivation alone is going to cost us around $10 million. We're putting about $1 million into the 256 Waymouth Street property. I'm sorry that it...I know we had emails and calls back and forth, and I just read this, and I don't know if we could...
Mario, are you on your item number 14?
Yes, term and termination.
Okay.
I don't see that...oh, the last sentence.
Yeah, just a little protection for us, that would be...
Fiona, in addition to that, one of the things I just caught as well, like, is you don't have like an address that's actually listed in here. Was that intentional as well?
I'll be honest with the Board. Attorney Galvin has been working on these arrangements with us, and he couldn't be here this evening. So the last draft that we have in place is the latest draft that Attorney Galvin had thought was the best agreement that we could achieve for the town. Mario, I'd be happy to talk with the attorney about the "at any time" language and see if he's willing to work with you.
That would be great.
It doesn't exist in all the other host community agreements.
Yeah, yeah, that language is the same in all of them.
It's the same thing?
Yeah. Yes, and Two Buds as well, and I imagine it's probably the same template for the one...
Okay, this is something we wanted to know. But, yeah, we would be...we would accept this as is, and either way, we're very grateful to be in Rockland. You can see, we've gone...we've done construction. We're starting the process. We're ready to go as fast as possible with the quality product, so...
Very good.
All right.
Pleasure of the board.
I'll be okay if I can make a motion to approve contingent on an address, the 256 Waymouth Street, being actually incorporated into the host community agreement?
Yes, Mr. Allen, of course. I think that's a great motion to make, so that we're sure we've nailed it down to this one location.
Yes.
So I'll make that motion.
I'll second that motion.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor?
Thank you, Board.
Welcome to Rockland.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hope everything goes well with all of you guys.
Thank you.
If anything we can do, let us know. All right, there we are now. I've got to go find my head thing again. Number six. All right. You know it's here somewhere. All right. You're welcome, gentlemen. Thank you very much for coming.
Appreciate it.
All right, remembrance ceremony. Veterans Agent Vinnie Fontaine, you up there, Vinnie?
How are you, Vinnie? Thank you, Chairman. Members of the Board, thanks for letting me speak. Next Tuesday on 9/11, we're going to have a small ceremony outside, out front. I feel it's important that we don't forget, especially, most of us were here at 9/11, so we all could tell where we were. I just feel it's important that we keep on remembering. I have the Fire Department and the Police Department taking part in the ceremony. It won't be very long, but just so we do remember, so...
Good. Any questions for the Board?
I'm going to say 9:00 a.m.?
9:00 a.m., yeah. It'll probably only be about 10, 10, 15 minutes. I have some of the churches in town participating. They're going to ring their bells at 9/11 after the ceremony, and the Fire Department's going to do their horn for...I'm not sure exactly what their procedure is, but they're going to do their horn afterwards, so...
Very nice.
And the public is welcome.
Who's...let me ask you a question. Who takes care of the flag to make sure it's at half-staff and everything?
So I take care of the town flags. The flags out front, the one at the memorial, and the one down on Union Street.
Okay.
Those are the three sites that I take care of.
Very good. Any questions, thoughts?
Nope, no questions at all.
Great, we'll see you there next Tuesday.
Thank you, Vinnie. Appreciate it. Thanks, Vinnie.
All right, let's see. Number seven, the town and accountant contract is tabled until 9/18, so we're not going to do that tonight. Number eight, the town administrator's report and correspondence. Ms. Birmingham?
Yes, sir. So we do have a few things to report tonight under the town administrator's report and correspondence. The first one is good news. We just received the announcement that we are getting a $100,000 rail trail grant from the Department of Conservation and Recreation, which will enable us to finish the third and final section of the former Hanover Branch rail trail in town as a paved, accessible recreational trail for area residents to use. So Dave Taylor and the Highway Department will start work in November. They'll be leveling it, clearing it, fixing some water and grading issues, and paving all the way to the Hanover Town Line. So we're excited, because on completion of this one, we'll have a paved trail all the way from North Abington straight through to the Hanover Town Line. It's very exciting, so pleased about that one. The second one, it is with regret that we accept the resignation of Mr. Donald Duner as a call firefighter in Rockland. You all have his letter of resignation in your binders. He's the last call firefighter for the town, and he states in his letter that he's enjoyed his time with the department and wishes everyone all the best. He's moving out of the area, so he won't be able to come in front of the Board, so we wanted to make sure that we noted that we appreciate his service tonight. And then I have a couple of things that you don't have in your book that came in at the last minute. We're also regretfully accepting Mr. Tom Ruvell's resignation from the ADA Committee. Tom is also our ADA inspector in town, so it's a bit of a conflict of interest for him to sit on the ADA Committee, so he's resigning. He's still happy to help them with anything. If they need information or assistance, he's available, but as we've said many times before, we need volunteers, and this is another open committee seat that we want to seek to fill. That's an important committee for the town. And the last one is also a call for volunteers from the Rockland Zoning Board, which I will which I will get you the copy of both Tom's letter and this letter. Put it in your boxes for you. They just came in. But Chairman Manzella needs alternates to sit on the zoning board. I believe they have three alternate positions open. And the zoning board would very much like volunteers to consider sitting as an alternate on the zoning board. And again, it's so important. I hope residents realize that we need volunteers from across town to help in all the good work that we do. So that's all of the town administrator comments for this evening.
All right, selectmen's comments. Comments and opinions expressed by the individual members do not necessarily reflect the views of the Board of Selectmen and are the opinions and comments of only the individual member. Mr. Mullin?
If I could just, I just have one thing actually surprising me tonight. But if I could just, I'll piggyback like Ms. Birmingham's comments about the vacancies on the committees here in town. So now we have the ADA Committee that has openings. We have the Community Preservation Committee, which has one opening where, like anyone who is interested, if they could apply to the selectmen's office as soon as possible. And like Ms. Birmingham also mentioned, we have openings on the zoning board and many more committees. One of the things, these past few months has been kind of a watershed moment, I think, in our history. And one thing that's really struck me as just actually pretty frustrating is that people think that they have more power saying and doing things on Facebook than they do if they've, like if they would actually show up and sign up for one of the committees that we have vacancies for. Believe it or not, whether it's this board or whether it's the Community Preservation Committee or whether it's the zoning board, like all the committees in town actually have the ability to do something, to do something positive. And that change isn't only possible by commenting on Facebook. So I would hope a lot of the people who have found, or newfound glory, if you will, to comment on Facebook, they would also consider joining some of these committees to actually make, to help all of us really make some positive impacts and progress for the town. But there was a comment over the weekend that just really struck me that more people have more power on Facebook now than they do, like than us volunteering their time and trying to make things right, sacrificing time away from our family. And like if all, and if all it takes is, you know, to comment every hour on Facebook, then I guess, you know, we're doing, we're doing it completely backwards. And I say that completely in jest and rhetorically. But anyone who is interested, who wants to do something really positive for the town other than making, frankly, other than frankly making noise, like we would welcome you to join us and to contribute to be, contribute to be part of the solution. So that's all I have for tonight. Thank you.
You know, one of the, one of the great things, I think, that's come out of the last, the last couple of months in this town, well, it's twofold. It's great in one sense that Mike Mullin and I are 100% on the same page. But it's awful because I go, I go after him when I do my comments. And my comments tonight. No, I'm telling you, Mike, it's fantastic because I felt like everything you just said was everything I already had written down for my comments about, over and over and over again. All right, I had a joke. It's probably not the right one. So, you know, I'm going to piggyback on what Mike just said. I've had some great conversations with some really, really good department heads. And I'm really proud of the department heads we have, and I think they do an amazing job. And I think they do an amazing job communicating to the public. We've offered office hours so that the public has, you know, an opportunity to talk to us directly, and we can help them, help facilitate and guide them and help them fix their problems and facilitate the conversation with the department or lead them in the right direction. I do think, you know, people feel as though Facebook or any other social media is the way to get our attention. You know, they put stuff out there, but what do they know? The thing that they just put out there has been talked about and that it's on a schedule. And the stuff is in the process. And if they have a question, call the board, call the committee. You just found out tonight who the liaisons are. Call one of us. None of us are afraid of answering public questions. You know, we are here. This is the job we signed up for. We're willing to do this, and we're willing to be a resource for the residents of the town. And even though we may not have oversight on some of these boards or committees, you know, there's professional courtesy. And if we mention it to them and start the conversation and bring the two parties together, maybe they can find a resolution outside of just airing their grievances, you know, however allowed they want to. The other thing too, just one more reminder, actually, two more things. Mike, I was also going to talk about the empty positions in town, you know, the different boards and committees. The CPC, Community Preservation Committee, we set a deadline for September 14th for applications. Still currently one. Okay. So that's something. If anybody out there wants to be a member of this committee, it's a relatively new committee. It started, what, a year ago? And it deals with historical, recreational, and housing, no, not housing. Yeah, housing, okay. So, and parks. So anybody who wants to get on board to that committee, come see Marcy Birmingham. All right? I just volunteer? Okay. And then last but not least, I'll have office hours next Friday morning, September 14th, from 9:00 to 11:00. And, okay, sorry, now last but not least, once again, we've had a death in this town because of the terrible opioid epidemic. This time, it was a friend of mine, Mike McGary. I grew up with Mike, graduated high school with Mike. Mike worked for me for several years. He'll have his funeral services at McGoon Biggins this Friday from 5:00 to 8:00 PM. Mike was a great guy, probably the funniest person I've ever met in my entire life. So at some point, something's got to give. You know, Rockland Cares has been doing an amazing job. They've been an amazing resource. And I just hope at some point we find, as a town, a solution to this problem. So that's it.
Mr. Mullin has one more thing.
Actually, three more things. But, so first of all, like this is actually real public information. But like from the May town meeting, like I know there's been a lot of interest in the work of the Fire Station Building Committee. And I just wanted to let the town residents know, like especially residents along the Howard Street, Blanchard Street, Chert Street corridor, that at our next meeting, September 18th, at 7:00 in the evening here in this room, the Fire Station, the Fire Station Building Committee will be making a presentation to this board with their recommendation. So I just wanted to let all the residents know, that anyone who has any questions, like any thoughts, I want to, wanted to learn more about what the Fire Station Building Committee has been up to. Those meetings have been open to the public. Those meetings have had a lot of public participation. But the, but the committee will be making a presentation here to this board at our next meeting on September 18th. So I just wanted to let you know about that. Secondly, Reimagine Rockland on the 22nd and the 23rd, like are holding, like a weekend of events as well. On the 22nd, from 10:00 to 12:00, there will be like a file cleanup day along Union Street. We'll be getting information out and sign up information on our Facebook page. But if anyone has any questions or want to sign up the old-fashioned way, feel free to contact the selectmen's office just to let us know. Like you're interested, like following that, following the cleanup at 12:00 at the library will be lunch. And there will also be the unveiling of the Soul of Rockland Initiative. So that's beginning at 12:00 on the 22nd at the library. Then on the 23rd, the time actually, the time escapes me. I think it's also 10:00, 11:00. But there'll be a bulldog walk as well. There'll be a walk for anyone who has dogs or just probably even wants to take a walk through the, through the center, like and through the rail trail. And like it will be a really exciting event as well. So I'll stay tuned as well, Facebook page and to the news media for that. And lastly, I just want to say, even though probably a few minutes ago I came off as a little frustrated, it's because I am. But I think the reality is, three of us really, and I don't want to speak for the other two gentlemen here, really love this town. We love what we do. It's been obviously like a few stressful months. But, and you know, the opportunity to work for like our fellow neighbors and for our town, there really isn't anything better than it. And, you know, I, I from one, I'm lucky to be here, lucky to serve our town. And I think these other two gentlemen will feel the same way. And so I apologize for the frustration, but it's just, sometimes it just builds up. So that's all I have.
That's enough.
It is.
I'm already kidding, Mr. Mullin. Yeah, really, I don't have much to say except what, school's back in. I'm happy for all the youngsters and their mothers and parents who are glad to get rid of their kids for a few hours in the day. May all the children do well at school. And I know, been at the couple of meetings with the school. I met the new teachers coming in. The town is building a new relationship with the school committee and the school side of the organization, if you want to call us, the entire organization rolling this together. And they've pledged to work with us to make sure that everything is running as smoothly as possible so that we don't have any issues between the two different departments. I think everything's going well. Dr. Cron is doing a great job over there. And they have a new financial person, and she's doing very well over there and working with our people over here very well. And I'm happy to say that. I just want to thank Ms. Birmingham. I know she hates to be in the limelight, but quite frankly, a lot of this grant money can be attributed to her diligence. You know, if we point them in a direction and say, there's the money, she can, she tends to go and get it and comes back with it. And that's a real good thing because we need some extra money to pay for all the people we've got to pay for to straighten out the mess we're in. So we're doing, we are doing pretty good, quite frankly, considering all the things that have gone on. The town of Rockland is really operating quite fluidly, and we're back on schedule. I had the Boston Globe reporter ask me, when do you think the town will right itself and get going again? And I said, quite frankly, the town has already righted itself, and we are going in the right direction, and we are accomplishing most everything that we need to do. So, you know, there was a temporary glitch in the system, if you want to call it that. And the three guys up here right now are doing a great job at what we do. Ms. Birmingham is doing a great job. And everybody in the town hall, bar none, has dug in and really proved, quite frankly, to everyone that, that we're all in this together. And so, you know, there's very little dissension in town hall, and everybody's working together, and that's a great thing. And I don't want to get too far afield here praising everybody. But quite frankly, there's an awful lot of people that need to be personally thanked for their roles in helping us clean up this little glitch, if you want to call that, and going on. So anyway, that's all I'm going to say tonight because these guys really steal everybody's thunder anyway.
I meant to say.
Is this a Lieutenant Columbo commission?
Yeah, when I was talking about the opioid crisis, I meant to say, Rockland Cares has their sixth annual candlelight vigil. It'll be 6:15 on Thursday, September 13th, at 6:15 PM at the Holy Family Church. Last year, we did at the high school, there were over 500 people. The year before that, there were well over 500 people at Holy Family Church. This year, I've invited the media to attend as well. So come on out. It's a great cause. Like I said, it's affected our community more so than most communities in the area. But, you know, come out and support your community. That's it. You're done? Go real. I'm done.
All right, one more thing. Yeah, quite frankly, the marijuana people are going to donate quite a bit of money to Rockland Cares. Each individual host agreement talks about $20,000 to $25,000, just a donation, free cash to local establishments like the veterans, Rockland Cares, Reimagine Rockland. Whoever needs the money should put a note into these people who we gave these things to to get them on their list for distribution of whatever funds that they're going to give us. All right, quite frankly, it's, could be anywhere from $75,000 plus per year. That's above and beyond whatever money the town makes. So it's going to be a really good deal for an awful lot of people once everything gets rolling and the state gets off their butts and allows us to collect the things that we're supposed to be collecting. So hopefully, it'll work out, and that'll do that. All right, we're going to go to executive session to consider the purchase, exchange lease or value of real property. And the chair declares that an open meeting may have to be detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the public party. And executive session pursuant to general laws, C dot 30A, Section 21A 7, to comply with or act under authority of any general or special law, specifically general law C 30A, Sections 22F and G regarding review of executive session minutes. There were two other things. We're going to, we're taking offer there to discuss strategy in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel. That's being dropped tonight. And to discuss litigation strategy, and that also is being tabled tonight till the next meeting. We're not going to reconvene, so.
So I'll make a motion to enter into executive session for the purposes which Larry just read, not to reconvene.
I was taking that motion.
Got a motion and a second? All in favor, Mr. O'Laughlin?
Aye.
Mr. Mullin?
Yes, aye.
And Mr. Ryan also says aye. Thank you, everyone, for showing up tonight and putting up with us. Glad to be here for you.